Oh, you're going to give them? Oh, yeah, that's right.
We're going to be starting the meeting, Councilwoman White. I would like to call the Monday, August 8th, 2022, Common Council Meeting to Order. Clerk Jones, I believe you have some comments you would make regarding the link for the meeting and other expectations of tonight's meeting?
Yes. Good evening, members of the public. For audio quality, we will be muting everyone not speaking by default to maintain good audio quality for council members as well as yourselves. If you would like to speak during the meeting on specific agenda items, please submit your request to speak in the chat. Directions to do so are located in the chat. We ask that you provide your full name and address as those are required for all speakers at in-person meetings. If you would like to be called on during the meeting to provide public input, again, please insert your name and address in the chat, and you will be called on during the relevant time for public input. You will be given five minutes to speak during public input. For citizens that wish to speak during the privilege of the floor, please insert the following into the chat during that time, and the council president will call on you. Insert your name and your address, and you will be given three minutes to speak during privilege of the floor. And please be sure to unmute yourself prior to giving your remarks.
Okay, thank you, Clerk Jones. I would also like to read a statement about terms of ex- in terms of expectations. Disrespectful, rude, or disruptive speech or actions will not be tolerated. Such speech and/or actions, as well as verbal attacks on any person, may result in the individual without notice, forfeiting the remainder of his or her allotted time. At this time, we are going to have our invocation, and that by will be with Rabbi Karen, I believe it's Companions, Companions with Temple Beth El South Bend. Are you here in person, or are you online? And I apologize if I mispronounced your last name.
Well, I'm looking for her online.
She's online.
She's online, okay.
My computer is doing an update, of course, so I can't get on it. If you're there, could you please unmute yourself and give our the invocation? And thank you for being with us tonight.
She was on there. I don't know if she can hear us. Yeah, here she is, right here. Can you unmute yourself, please? She's right here. Yeah, it says she's on.
Well, we can't, we can't hear you. Is it anything on our end, or is it her?
No, she, she, she has to unmute herself. Rabbi Companions? Can you hear us? Okay, she's, she unmuted, she's unmuted now. Can you hear us?
Good evening, can you hear me? I'm not hearing anything at my end.
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you for being with us tonight.
Just if you can indicate if you can hear me, maybe send me, okay. Okay, I'm not hearing anything, so I will go on with my invocation. Sorry if I'm culpable for the glitch. So, thank you for inviting me to be with you this evening. As we gather together to conduct the business of the great city of South Bend, let us rededicate ourselves to work together in unity and harmony to improve this particular region of Indiana that we all call home, each of us bringing our individual gifts and talents to this worthy endeavor. Let us pledge to join hands to ensure that the city of South Bend is able to continue to realize the abundant potential with which it is blessed. With those sentiments in mind, I offer this prayer by Rabbi Naomi Levy entitled, "Our Actions Are Our Prayers Too." The prayer of our hearts and our mouths is our hope and yearning, but the prayer of our limbs, our actions, is our salvation. Dr. Abraham J. Heschel was one of the greatest theologians of this century. Not just a scholar and a writer, he was also an activist. When he marched with Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. in Selma, Alabama, he proclaimed, "It felt as if my legs were praying." The goodness that we perform in this world is our highest prayer. When we struggle to repair this world, to rise above our complacency and offer compassion, charity, and love, we are praying. When we fight to eradicate poverty, injustice, and war, when we take the time to perform acts of kindness, we are praying. When we gather the strength to give of ourselves to those who so desperately need our assistance instead of averting our gaze, we are praying. "I am my prayer to you, O God," the psalmist cried out. When our actions embody our truest humanity, we become a prayer. And even if we do not pray or believe in God, our actions to bring about good and to alleviate suffering in this world are no less important than those of our neighbors who do. Every person deserves to have their suffering alleviated, even and maybe especially those who suffer from illness, including mental illness. May we work together to serve all those who live in our community with compassion and understanding wherever possible, rather than with violence and force. When our actions embody our truest humanity, we become a prayer. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Rabbi Karen, for giving that invocation if you can hear me this evening. At this time, I would like us all to please stand and give the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll? Thank you.
Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Lee?
Present.
Councilmember Warner?
Present.
Councilmember Wax?
Present.
Councilmember White?
Present.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Present.
Councilmember Hammond?
Present.
Vice President Niskoski?
Present.
Eight present.
Thank you. At this point, we'll move to the report on subcommittee on minutes. We have none. On special business, we have none. We do have report from city offices this evening. And we have, the report is on brownfields remediation and MACOG grants and testing plans for neighborhood sites. Looks like Chris Dressel, the city planner, and Leah Thrill, environmental planner with MACOG.
Thank you, good evening, Kayla Bauer.
I would like to make some comments before the presentation.
Sure. Absolutely. Councilwoman White would like to-
I don't want to cut you off, but I just want to make these comments.
Please feel free to make a comment.
I would just like to say that I was invited by Ann Mannix, who was president of the NW- who is, I'm sorry, NWSN, old Neighborhood Association, on July the 26th, where we had our city planner, Chris, share the city's role in the brownfields remediation, including Leah Thrill, environmental planning with MACOG, who explained MACOG's grants and testing plans for the neighborhood sites at that time. Their presentation was so informative, and I indicated at the meeting that I was going to invite them to share that information and also to entertain any questions that council members might have, and they consented to do so. Since 2019, my interest in neighborhood sites, including those sites that are challenged in regards to possible contamination, started at that time. So I'm very grateful that they were able to clear out their schedules to be with us at this time. I would like to also recognize President Raphael Morton, President of the County Council, and Robert Kruzzinski, Vice President, known as Bobby K., there with us at this time. And I'll turn it over to Community Investment Director Kayla Bauer.
Thank you, Councilwoman White. And that was, I was basically going to say much the same. Some questions came up during the Near West Side neighborhood process and were raised by the Neighborhood Association, and so we thought Chris and Leah graciously offered their time to present that to the full council. So I'll turn it over to them. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council. I'm Chris Dressel, Senior Planner with the City of South Bend Department of Community Investment with offices on the 14th floor of this building. And Leah Thrill and I are here to just offer sort of a recap on what was discussed at the meeting of the Near West Side Neighborhood Association a few weeks ago. Councilmembers White and Tomas Morgan were both present for that, so we're happy to share with the other council members. So Leah has a more structured presentation just surrounding the upcoming grant that was awarded to MACOG. And South Bend has been part of that, that brownfield team. We were active in the current grant and look forward to being part of the future one. And within the grant, the site in the 1500 block of West Washington was a sort of a featured site in the grant application. So we'll, we'll receive attention as part of that grant. I'll let Leah speak to that. Generally, just wanted to talk about brownfields. Some, some of this may be familiar, but just some is worth, worth repeating and saying again. I think when you're addressing brownfields, you're really dealing with a list of unknowns. And so there's two steps to that. One of them is, is making sure you're thorough in identifying all of the unknowns, and then the next step is going about sort of reducing those unknowns. So depending on the site that you're talking about and the, and the status of this that it's in, there could be a whole series of unknowns, or there's been an opportunity to reduce them. Because every, any good definition of what a brownfield is, is really talking about real and perceived concerns. So sometimes the perception is as strong as the reality. And when it comes to brownfield sites, I mean, South Bend has been, has had a history, and I think a positive history in how to, in addressing them. Obviously, we think about the Studebaker and Oliver sites, and now Drewries is, is in that list. But it should be, it's worth knowing and repeating that. I think a lot of the sites in the city are maybe a little more mundane in the sense of, you know, gas stations, dry cleaners. So every, every major intersection in the city has probably had one or, or both of those at one time. So, and, and while some of these have still managed to contain business or economic, economic activity, I think that, that activity can be, can be stunted by, by the past presence of, of recognized environmental conditions, these past uses that have tended to reduce the possibility of the future of the sites. And that's, I think that's the key to addressing brownfields is, is part of it is just sharing, sharing information and, and then moving on to trying to ask the questions about how, how can sites be best addressed? So, so the timing is, is good. Again, MACOG was successful in obtaining a grant, and Leah will comment on some of those sites that we're able to address. But we're happy to, you know, as we, as we make the grant, grant comes available later in the year is to make that available to the public and to all property owners that may be seeking an opportunity to find out more about their, their sites and move forward. So that's, I think that's the extent of my comments to start with. I'm going to turn it over to Leah, she has the formal presentation about the MACOG grant. Thank you.
And don't worry, it's just like three or four slides, so I won't keep you. But Leah Thrill, Senior Environmental Planner with MACOG, we're a regional planning organization, and we cover those four counties shown on that slide. And I appreciate the opportunity to make you all aware of this funding that we have because it is not completely appropriated to sites. We're hoping to get your input as you're out talking to residents, business owners, neighborhood organizations. What sites would they like to see this funding spent on to move those properties back to more productive reuse? So with that in mind, just want to make you aware that the funding that we have is not all for South Bend, it's being shared over this entire coverage area, and we've been working on this since 2018, when each of the county commissioners formally joined our coalition to be able to share this funding, make it easier to administer and access for all of our communities, unincorporated areas, small towns included. The majority of our funding was spent in Elkhart and Cosiasko County in Warsaw in the last cycle, but I'll be sharing a bit about how the funding was spent in our first cycle of funding. So far, we've worked on three sites in South Bend. Just to give you some context, we did a background report for Clay's Candy when the city was considering acquiring that. And then we did some work over in the near Northwest neighborhood, the Ward Baking Company Building, if you're familiar with that, on the 900 block of Portage. They've been, the developers, local developers have been rehabilitating that. We helped out. And then right across the street, the 800 block of Portage is just a vacant lot, and the city owns that. And that's a case where it was good news. We went in there, we did a round of testing, and it does not appear that there are any significant environmental issues that would prevent that from being put back to residential, for example. So that's good news. On the Ward Baking Company side, they needed to do some lead, paint, and asbestos remediation, and they moved forward with their project. So it's really to unlock that environmental uncertainty, remove that barrier, and move projects forward. That's what our funding's intended for. Unfortunately, it couldn't be used to clean up or remediate any issues, with the limited, limited exception of sometimes removing underground storage tanks to sample underneath and then dispose of them. So we, we cannot fix all the problems, but we can certainly help get more information to have a more productive conversation about these properties. So in our grant application that we submitted to the EPA, which is the federal agency funding our grant, we submitted as a target site here, the 1510, 1520 West Washington Street. And that site was selected because of the conversations that happened in this room back in 2019. Most of you are new faces to me, but environmental issues were one of the things that kept being raised and were a concern of a number, a number of council people not wanting to move the permanent supportive housing project forward until some of those questions were addressed. So we just needed more information and more data about that site. The city already owns it, it's been cleared. Compare that to the site next door, Herwich Iron and South Bend Range, those are a little scarier because they have buildings and you can see the cost of demolition and everything. Well, that's already been taken care of on this site. So from our standpoint, it's fairly easy to sample and then actually move that forward since it's been a number, a couple decades since activities have happened on that site, and it's remained stagnant because by and large, environmental certain, uncertainty. Just wanted to show you a quick snapshot, historical photo and diagrams that we found along with a picture of the site here. Basically, that shows the area where sampling was conducted in 2000 to 2001, when the tanks were removed. They just sampled the sidewalls and really were focused on underground storage tanks where there was petroleum products, and it was reported as a spill incident. There was not like a discreet spill, but because contamination was found, it went to IDAM, and they worked through that process to get closure and remove those tanks. But what's important about this background information is that a no further action letter was then issued by IDAM. And to me, that, that sounds confusing, just the title of that letter, no further action sounds like a closure letter, a certificate of completion, a green light, maybe to move forward with any uses residential or otherwise. But it's helpful to understand that this letter, which was referenced several times in that 2019 meeting, really meant that that specific incident of petroleum being found, that contamination no longer posed an imminent threat to public health or the environment. It was not leaking into the groundwater, going into neighboring properties, or anything like that. So that the incident could be considered closed, but importantly, contamination still remains on site in the areas described above, shown in the diagram where the tanks were. And activities must be restricted to present, prevent direct contact, inhalation, and consumption. So that means it couldn't be a soccer field, it couldn't be housing or otherwise have people on that property. So we really need to do a site-wide investigation to understand what about the lead impacts from the nearby Herwich Iron, is that a concern? It was really limited just to petroleum constituents at that time. So we need that data, we have funding to provide that data to you all, so you have more complete information and can make informed decisions moving forward about any projects that are brought forward to reuse this city-owned property. So we plan, the timeline for that is this fall. Starting in October, we could start to use our funding, hopefully come back to you midwinter with that sampling data, and then the city will be able to make decisions from there. We don't, we can't work on the Herwich Iron site nearby because that's in IDAM enforcement, and we've not currently explored South Bend Range since, I think that's a tax delinquent property at this time. And we work really closely with the city departments to know what are their priorities, and we need to have a plan for moving something from start to finish. And if the city owns something that helps, that's not a requirement. But that just gives you a little idea of how this is just a really small piece to get it started, but some of those other pieces for demolition, cleanup, will need to get figured out, but we can help support in that process. So, any questions?
Okay, thank you so much for your presentation for us this evening. At this point, is there any council members that have questions? Or should we start at one end and just work our way to the other?
I do have a couple of questions. I really appreciate your presentation, especially, I do recall that meeting, 2019, I think it went to about 12 o'clock or 1:00 PM. And so looking at that site on West Washington, the first phase was conducted and a letter was submitted, but it was not as clear as it could have been. And so what you're saying now, the additional monies that you've gotten from, from the grant, what portion of those dollars would be used to continue the testing for the West Washington site?
We are committed, as one of our two priority sites, out of the $500,000 we were awarded, to do as many rounds of sampling as are needed. So that could be $50,000, it could be $80,000 to $100,000. We're limited to spending no more than $200,000 on, on any particular site by the EPA, but this is a priority, and we've dedicated funding for this site. But we are open to other sites being submitted, smaller sites, corner gas stations. We may be able to connect you to resources for cleanup dollars as well in, in that case, so.
My second question is, what prompted MACOG to become involved in the actual testing of this site?
This specific site? Talking with the city of South Bend to understand what their priorities were and what sites, had there been a conversation, a project that didn't move forward and environmental issues were wrapped up in that, if we can untangle that, obviously, there's no shortage of sites in the universe of South Bend, but our funding can't address everything. But sites where it's, it's a specific barrier, not the market, not needing a million dollars for demolition, but, but just uncertainty.
Okay, does he answer all your questions?
No, he did too, so.
Okay, no, I just wanted to make sure, you're good. Okay, Councilwoman Tomas Morgan?
Thank you. You addressed this in the neighborhood meeting, but can you, you or Chris speak briefly to what is expected of developers on vacant land and, and proposing new development?
Sure, I think if your, if your interest is in a, in a site that has a history of, of commercial or industrial use, where there, where there are what they call ERCs or environmental recognized conditions, I think it's, I think it's part of any playbook as a developer to have to, to know, know, you know, do your due diligence and do what we call, in this assessment, some of your bread and butter items are your Phase One assessment, which is basically just looking at the history of the property, looking at all, all the uses that have been present on the property. If you ever look at one of those documents, it's probably like this big, but most of it is, is the research involved. So it's looking at maps, whether they be sandborne maps, or just other aerial photos that are available from the time to sort of confirm what can be in the site. And then if, if the, the end, I guess the end game of any, endpoint of any of those assessments in that Phase One tell you that there is something that needs further study, and again, this is all just by visual, if you see, you know, if there's, in this case, I mean, we're talking about a grasslot, but if you see anything like stains on the concrete, if you see items piled up on the site, if you see evidence, the other evidence that points to there needs to be a need to sample, then it moves on to a Phase Two assessment. So where, where a Phase One is, is fairly standard, Phase Twos can range, like Leah mentioned that, when you're, when you're looking for specific items that might be present on the site. So you can do soil sampling, groundwater sampling, and other investigation that leads you really up, these, these grants can provide assistance right up, including a remediation plan or cleanup plan right up until actual dollars provided for cleanup, which would be via other, other resources. So there's, there's a wide range. So anyone that's seeking to develop these sites, I think the key is, is to have, to do the appropriate due diligence prior to taking ownership of the site. And I think especially so if you're, if you're engaging a financial institution, so where you need to, to find resources, I think the sort of assume is part, part and parcel with any transaction when it comes to these type of sites.
And I would emphasize, adding to what Chris said, the city doesn't need to be involved at all necessarily in the use of this funding. So you have one third party and another third party doing a property transaction, and it's a gas station. We'd love to help protect the new owner from walking into a situation where they might be seen by regulators as a potentially responsible party and then be in enforcement and be required to clean it up, not having known what they were walking into. So we can help, you know, any private developers that would like to talk about our funding, does not need to come from the city submitting a site. If you go to www.macog.com/brownfields.html, there's a Sites of Interest form that anyone can submit.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lee?
How, how long does it take for you guys to do the testing and get results back?
It can really vary, but it can take about three months to get the report in hand. There have been labor shortages and delays just in getting report, results back from the laboratory. So it'll be at least winter, December, January, before we'll be back with that.
And is there a certain contaminant that we're finding in our soil?
Really varies, might be arsenic and lead just because of background levels of arsenic or lead just being in gasoline, lead paint, things like that. Those are pretty common. or lead just being in gasoline, lead paint, things like that. Those are pretty common. Sometimes there are chlorinated solvents from dry cleaners or other industrial things. We hope not to find things in groundwater because it can be a little trickier to clean up and also pose a vapor intrusion risk potentially. But those are all considerations before any redevelopment can move forward. IDEM will work very closely with the developer to make sure what the levels are, that there's not risk based on the intended reuse in those plans. So they'll, they'll make sure that that happens appropriately.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Warner? Come back, Councilwoman, no Wax, Councilwoman Hammond?
Can either of you tell us if these properties being mentioned are posing any threat to neighboring residents, perhaps children playing in the area, those types of things?
In the case of the vacant properties in the 1500 block of West Washington, the evidence from the data on the petroleum contamination that was found was that it was not posing a threat to the nearby, there aren't many residents close by, but that it was not posing a threat. But no data has been collected onsite, to my knowledge, to determine whether there could be other things there. So that's why we felt we needed to collect that data. There has been sampling as it pertains to Herwich Iron to look at lead levels in the surrounding homes, and that's taken place at different points. But unfortunately, there wasn't a clear pattern. You'd expect to see really high levels of lead in the homes closest and have it go down, but it was kind of all over the place, just because we have a number of different sources, so they couldn't conclusively tie it to any specific property. And actually, Herwich Iron was at one time listed to be on the National Priorities List, which is like the super fun list, but they couldn't conclusively say it was from that site that we have lead in our neighborhoods, because it comes from all over. Were there other sites in particular you were wondering about?
That whole Washington area. My next question would be, is there any way of restricting access to that area until we know what the potential harms could be?
Well, if you talk about the larger areas surrounding the 1500 block, I mean, some of these are private properties, of course. Regarding the 1500 block, I don't know if there's been, I mean, it's something to take into consideration. I don't think we've, we've seen, like Leah said, anything definitive that tells us that there's a hazard there. But I think that's why we see this as a priority. So it'll be amongst the first things that we work on in this grant, starting October 1st, is start to, to get, you know, fill in some, a lot of the gaps that we have in data, starting with that Phase 1, moving to a Phase 2. So it could be a matter of months before we can get started.
If we do find, for example, really high levels of lead that are above like a recreational level, that would be safe, and you see, oh, there's children that are playing soccer, one of the city's continuing obligations as an owner would be to put up a fence or some other barrier to restrict access if we found that. I think that would be something that IDEM would expect, once they review that report, so. But right now, we have no evidence to suggest that. It's more exploratory, just to rule it out before anything proceeds.
So currently, we don't know when there is a window or a gap of time prior to the results of the testing coming back. Wouldn't it be prudent to take the safer course?
I would defer to the city. If the city wants to put up the fence, it's not been fenced for a long time, but.
We appreciate the concern. We can take that under advisement. That's a good point. Thank you.
Councilman Davis?
When was the last time those facilities were under use? They were like active?
Like 1990-something, when the tanks were moved was like 2001?
No, 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 not on meaning like that. I mean, far as people in there working. How long has it been since somebody was actually in there producing some sort of manufactured good that they were selling on the open market?
Are you specifically talking about the Oil Express site at 1510, 1520?
I'm talking about the whole entire area over there in the 2nd District, just across the street from Frankie's Barbecue. You have like two or three factories over there. You have one on the end of Cherry Street.
Sure.
And then you have those two that's kind of like stuck inside of that.
Sure.
Yeah, Circle Avenue would probably be the address. Am I correct? Is that Circle Avenue?
Yeah, I think the South Bend range is on Cherry Street, and Circle Avenue would contain Herwich Iron, yeah.
Yeah, the question still stands.
Sure. I don't have the best timeline. I know that the, the South Bend range escan, that closed about 35 years ago. I can't, I don't have a track of what's, all the activities been happening in that building since. I think for Herwich Iron, it's probably been two decades, at least, since there's been any, any organized activity. That's just based on research documents that probably Leah and I have accessed.
We can, we can follow up. The reports that we have would detail.
Well, it doesn't really have a bearing on what I'm going to say or not.
Sure.
But it does, so I should say that it does. What I'm getting at is that the level of apathy as it relates to these areas, we just had a whole entire presentation from the administration talking about the AR, was it AARP or ARP funds from the federal government, and how those monies were introduced to high COVID areas. And then we had Ms. Charlotte Pfeiffer, who actually lives right down the street from what we were talking about, directly down the street. And she, you know, mentioned that many of these same dollars were to go to areas that needed the support, the development, et cetera, cleanup perhaps. And she, you know, really gave a compelling argument about what happens on the west of the river versus the east of the river conversation. She also pointed out that many of the major projects and the things that people are enjoying are not necessarily going to the areas where the population, well, to the darker hue populations, was she was really getting at. She even, you know, went on to talk about how the Howard Park has received over a $50 million investment, and then we turn around and we spend, or we are celebrating the win of $15 million for a new community center. And she said, that's not even comparable. You can't even, so the reason why I asked that question, the reason I'm bringing that up, the reason why I'm repeating everything that was said earlier, is the fact that there is not a lot of energy to suggest that we will even be interested in changing the way these environments look and how they've been looking. That's looked the same way my entire life. And I can say that, I'm 42, I'll be 43 next month, actually. And so I'm not sure what's going to happen. I hope something does happen that's good, right? We're dealing with the situation over at Beck's Lake, right? And we're talking about, you know, the hill is not trash. It's not a natural hill. It got to be something in there. I mean, it has to be something in there. It just continues to just re-insert itself about the environmental racism that's taking place in this city, and it's disgusting. And there is really no political will, there's no empathy for the members of this community that live in those areas. The idea of a simple fence going around it is like, kind of like, we'll kind of look at it. No, a fence needs to go over there. Just like when we were tearing down houses with Pete. They weren't securing the property sites properly. The asbestos that was coming from the homes was going into the air. They were tearing down Bendix Corporation, still tearing it down. Asbestos and everything else is going into the air. They even had a fan blowing it. Somebody has to have a heart somewhere.
Thank you for your comments, Councilman Davis. I don't have anything further to add than what the rest of my colleagues have already said. I thank you for coming to, for the presentation before us this evening to give us an update about the activities going on in the areas of our city that have brownfields. I guess I do have one question. Once you identify those, was all of those areas that you're in now were part of the neighborhood plan that was before us, correct? And so that means, once those are identified and remediated, that plan would be able to proceed in the manner that was, you know, I guess, that was wanted by the residents there through dialogue and meetings and?
Sure, certainly, it's a corner, a corner piece of the plan, went through that process. I mean, the site in the 1500 block, which is under complete city control, I think we have the opportunity to move on that quickly. But if we can bring attention to the other sites, you know, I think the site at Herwich Iron is definitely under the attention of IDEM. And if, you know, I think, being at the neighborhood meeting, we heard this, and I'm hearing it from, from the council members tonight, I think we, I mean, these sites, they need, you know, there needs to be an equality in how we can try to address these sites. And, you know, it's, it's, you know, the timing is unfortunate as far as the weight, but I think there's a, again, trying to address brownfields, a lot of it is just dealing with unknowns. And if we can start to lift some of those unknowns in the, over the course of this grant, that helps take, sort of lift some of the, some of the depression of the area, and sort of what, what's the, what's the future, you know, bring a, bring a more positive future outlook to that area. That's, and I think the, the plan was meant to, to accentuate that, so.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I think that everyone had an opportunity to ask their questions. I would like to say thank you so much for.
Just one more, really?
It's two questions, Councilman Davis, and you elaborate, I let you really elaborate on more than the two questions.
I didn't ask two questions, I asked one question. I talked about the history of the area. I didn't ask two questions. Why do you keep doing this to me? Every time I open my mouth, it's always like this thing that you do. It's like Henry's not allowed to talk. I am. When Ann Calada worked for the city of South Bend, I remember us approving brownfield after brownfield grants. It was like a collection of them. It was during the time that we were tearing down the Studebaker, the South Bend Lath Building. I think you remember that because you were here two hours ago. We were here together. What gave her the ability to collect some of these brownfield grants at one time like that? I mean, she was able to produce several.
I think the, those resources haven't changed, and as we're moving on to a new chapter, whether that be with Drury's or some of these other larger sites, I think that that opportunity is still there. So, I mean, those, that, those conditions are still present to do that, to tap into what IDEM or the EPA has available.
The EPA recently expanded the size of their cleanup grants from, I believe, 500,000 to 5 million. Don't quote me on that exactly, but it's in the millions. So 500,000 does not get you very far at all. 5 million, now we're talking. So to the extent that we're able to find sites that would be eligible for cleanup grants, we could support the city, just like we will be, I'll be helping write grants for the city of Elkhart, to try to get actual cleanup dollars, which start to make a difference in making the sites safe and clean.
Can TIF money be used to do that? Can TIF money be used to do that?
To clean up sites, I believe so.
Thank you.
It's been done.
Thank you.
There are resources.
Oh, we have them. I'm sure we do.
So are you finished with your comments, Councilwoman Davis?
I'm done. Thank you so much. I'm done.
You're very welcome. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'd like to move on here. For any members that are here and present, I'm going to go through a couple of bills, in case you're waiting to hear these, that have been tabled. One of them will be Bill Number 2236. That was tabled. They have the, okay. That was under Health and Public Safety, Bill Number 2236. The other one would be Bill Number 1622, Bill Number 1722, Bill Number 2232, and Bill Number 3222. Those bills were all tabled either indefinitely or tabled with a date set in a future date. So if you're here to see those bills, they will not be presented here tonight. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to resolve and to revolve into the Committee of the Whole. It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, or can we do it all? Yeah, we can do that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
The Committee of the Whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council's meeting where bills are given a second reading in public hearing. I wish to share with you that bills that will be given a second reading in public hearing have been given a first reading and set for a committee meeting in public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee where the bill was discussed and the results of their discussion. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation on the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee report. The formal presentation shall be untimed. Clerk Jones, could you give Bill 23-22 a second reading?
2322, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Approving a Petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 223 North Lafayette Boulevard, Councilmanic District Number 1, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, Chair. Bill Number 2322 came before the Zoning and Annexation Committee this afternoon, and comes to the Committee of the Whole with a favorable recommendation.
Is the petitioner present, and I ask that you state your name and address, and share with us key points regarding the bill that's before us.
Good evening, Angela Smith, zoning administrator for the city of South Bend. The office is located on the 14th floor of this building. The petition for 223 North Lafayette is to allow for an auto detailing or vehicle service site under the ordinance. The existing building is being retrofitted to allow for this use, which happens completely inside the building. And so everything they're doing will fit in terms of the development standards of the zoning ordinance. They just need approval of the use itself. This comes to you from the Board of Zoning Appeals with a favorable recommendation. The petitioner is here as well.
Would you like to say anything?
Sure. My name is Randy Moore. Address is 1509 Berkshire Drive, South Bend, Indiana, 46614. I am the owner of Deluxe Detail, which currently rents the building. We've been in there since last August, where we've done a ton of renovations on the interior of the building. We have hopes to do a lot of exterior renovations in the future. We've been in business for a little over three years now, and now we're considered probably one of the third largest detail shops in like the South Bend, Elkhart regional area in terms of physical size and sales. I myself grew up in South Bend and have been around downtown all my life. This building has a lot of car history, has been used for cars for pretty much all of its life. So we're really excited to be in this space and continue to use it in a different way, and modify the building as well to a newer standard.
Council members, do you have any questions for the petitioner? None? At this time, we'll go to the public hearing portion. Clerk Jones, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 23-22?
There's no one in the virtual public that's expressing the interest to speak in favor of Bill 2322.
Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
There is no one from the virtual audience wishing to speak in opposition as well.
Council members, is there anyone that would like to make any statements or anything? I would just like to say thank you for investing in the 1st District, and continue to do auto detailing in our city, and continue to preserve one of our historical buildings. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. I will now entertain a motion for Bill 23-22.
I move that Bill 2322 go to the full council for passage.
Clerk Jones, will you take the roll, please?
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
All right. Bill twenty-three dash twenty would be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Clerk Jones, will you give a second reading to twenty-four dash twenty-two?
Twenty-four twenty-two, public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana. Approving a petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at fourteen thirty Mission Walker Avenue, Councilmanic District Number Three in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, Chair. This bill came before zoning and annexation this afternoon. And due to the absence of the petitioner, I have the right bill correct, we brought that forward with no recommendation.
Is the petitioner present? I ask that you state your name and address and share with us key points regarding the bill that's before us.
Sure. We have the petitioner here with us today. This is Angela Smith from the city of South Bend, zoning administrator. The property here is a longstanding auto use. This is one of those corner gas stations that Chris mentioned earlier that was all over the city of South Bend, and the pumps have since been removed, but the building itself has remained and has operated off and on over the years as a vehicle repair. The building has sat empty for some time, and now the petitioner would like to reestablish the use as auto repair, which requires a special exception under the zoning district. During that time, they will be working with us to help bring the site up to the current standards of development. This comes to you from the Board of Zoning Appeals with a favorable recommendation, and the petitioner is present.
All right. Mr. Petitioner, how are you? Will please state your name and address.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jamie Diaz. The address is fourteen thirty Mission Walker Avenue. And all I got to say is I just, I would like to open up the place if possible. If not, I just got to move on and look for something else. But since I've been, I've seen it's empty for a while, and it's suitable for a minor auto repair, it's already established. That's what I was just, you know, giving it a shot.
Council members, do you have any question for the petitioner? If none, at this time, we'll go to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill twenty-four dash twenty-two?
There's no one from the virtual public that is expressing interest to speak in favor of this bill.
Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
There's no one wishing to speak in opposition as well.
At this point, the public hearing for Bill twenty-four dash twenty-two is closed. Council members, if you'd like to make any statements? I will now entertain a motion. Thank you for your investment in the city. Sorry.
I'd like to make a motion then to send Bill twenty-four twenty-two to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
All right. Can we do this by a cremation? Oh, okay. All right. All right. Well, Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
All right. Bill twenty-four dash twenty-two will go to, twenty-four dash twenty-two will go to the council with a favorable recommendation. Clerk Jones, would you give us a second reading for Bill number thirty-one dash twenty-two?
Thirty-one twenty-two, public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana. Approving a petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at nine fourteen Sherman Avenue, Councilmanic District Number One in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
All right. Is there a committee report?
Yes, Chair. Likewise, thirty-one twenty-two came before zoning and annexation this afternoon and comes to the Committee of the Whole with a favorable recommendation.
All right. Is the petitioner present? I ask that you state your name and address and share with us key points regarding the bill that's before us.
Good evening. Angela Smith, zoning administrator from the city of South Bend with offices located on the fourteenth floor of this building. This site is a new build. It's a vacant property in the near Northwest neighborhood. And the Near Northwest Organization is working on constructing a new duplex on what is currently a vacant lot. There's two adjacent lots in which they'll be looking at doing some single-family development as well. Because this is in a zoning district where duplex requires a special exception. We are before you here this evening. And this comes to you from the Board of Zoning Appeals with a favorable recommendation. The petitioner may be online.
Yes, I'm, I'm here. This is Kathy Schuth at Near Northwest Neighborhood, address one zero zero seven Portage Avenue. Angela summed up the project really well. These will be two two-bedroom units that will be for rent at income-restricted rates. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Council members, do you have any questions? If not, we'll go to the public portion. Clerk Jones, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill thirty-one dash twenty-two?
There is no one from the public that is expressing interest to speak in favor of Bill thirty-one dash twenty-two.
Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
There is no one wishing to speak in opposition as well.
At this point, the public hearing portion for Bill thirty-one dash twenty-two is now closed. Council members, would you like to make any statements regarding this bill?
I just want to say thank you to the neighborhood organization and, and Ms. Kathy Schuth. It's really exciting to see housing, new housing being built on vacant land.
Anyone else? Yes. Councilwoman.
Ditto to that. And I, this is really heavy lifting for a neighborhood association. It's very impressive to see what's happening in this area. And so, again, thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. White says thank you.
Thank you, yeah. The revitalization was great.
You know, when neighborhoods and others work collaboratively together, you see all the results. And we know that there is such a need for affordable housing, be it duplexes or apartments within our community. So, thank you for your continued work and support of this effort.
And I would just have to say that as the representative of the First District, that I am so proud that we're, that the NNN is, is building houses and the policies and things that the administration has been putting forward is helping to spur more of that. And a duplex in this area and affordable housing is so important, and we need it, we need as much as we possibly can. So, again, thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
All right. I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill thirty-one twenty-two.
I move to send Bill thirty-one twenty-two to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
All right. Clerk Jones, it, it's been, the motion is, there's been a motion and it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, please call the roll.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
All right. Bill number thirty-one twenty-two will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Clerk Jones, will you read Bill, will you give sec, a second reading to thirty-three dash twenty-two?
Thirty-three twenty-two, public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana. Approving a petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at nineteen oh-eight East Calvert Street, Councilmanic District Number Three in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thirty-three twenty-two?
All right. Is there a committee report? Oh.
I think there was some thirty-two was tabled until September the twelfth.
Thirty-two, thirty-two twenty-two was tabled, but I don't think that's what you read.
I read, I, no, we read thirty-three twenty-two. Huh? We read thirty-three dash twenty-two. Yeah. I'm good. All right. I'm trying to make sure.
Do you want the committee report?
Yes.
Are we good?
Yes.
Bill thirty-three twenty-two yet again came before zoning and annexation. We were busy, busy this afternoon. And it comes to the Committee of the Whole with a favorable recommendation.
All right. Is the petitioner present? This has been the Angela Show. I ask that you state your name and address and share with us key points regarding the bill before us.
Angela Smith, zoning administrator for the city of South Bend with offices located on the fourteenth floor. This, like the previous one, is for a duplex, only in this instance, nineteen oh-eight Calvert is for an existing residential structure. The structure at some point was converted to a duplex in that there's two kitchens, two living areas and everything that would make it a duplex, including two utility meters and everything. However, we were unable to verify that that was ever legally converted and that it had remained in continuous use to keep its grandfather again. The petitioner here this evening is looking to finish that process and legalize it so they can move forward in a legal nature. This comes to you from the Board of Zoning Appeals with a favorable recommendation, and the petitioner is here.
All right. Let's hear from the petitioner.
Thank you for your time. We acquired the, Andrew Mwangi, the property owner at our nineteen oh-eight Calvert, acquired this property because it was sectioned off as a duplex. The idea was that, you know, I could dwell in the residence upstairs and my mother's downstairs, so I can be able to just take care of her. The property is, has, it's full-featured, like it's, has a full kitchen and bath upstairs and full kitchen and bath downstairs. It does come with separate utility bills for gas and electric. And we're looking to, you know, just finish up work on it and keep improving, you know, the look and feel of, you know, this area there in Calvert. It's my mother.
All right. Mom, you have anything you want to say too?
Not at the moment.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Council members, we heard this in committee.
Sorry, I was just going to add one thing. I wanted to thank the petitioner for their patience. They had filed for a special exception in two thousand and nineteen under the Area Plan Commission, and the petition lapsed and didn't quite make it through. So, I know they were caught off guard. They've been great to work with to kind of bring this up to conformance, so.
Anything from the council members? Yes?
Yes, thank you. Just to say thank you for your, your patience and, and working with us through this. And I'm glad to see the development in the neighborhood. Thank you for your investment and for taking care of your mom. It's wonderful.
You're very welcome. Thanks. I'm looking forward to it.
Anybody else? All right. At this time, we're going to go to the public hearing portion. Clerk Jones, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill thirty-three dash twenty-two?
There is no one from the virtual public that is expressing interest to speak in favor of Bill thirty-three twenty-two.
All right. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
There is no one wishing to speak in opposition of Bill thirty-three twenty-two.
And at this point, the public hearing on Bill thirty-three dash twenty-two is now closed. Council members, would you like to make any statements?
Just to continue with the trend, thank you for working on this home and improving the city of South Bend.
All right. I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill thirty-three dash twenty-two.
I'd like to make a motion that Bill thirty-three twenty-two go to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
All right. The most, there is a motion and a second. Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
All right. Bill thirty-five dash twenty-two will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thirty-three.
I'm sorry. Thirty-three, I'm, I'm moving ahead. Thirty-three dash twenty-two will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Clerk Jones, would you please give a second reading to Bill thirty-five dash twenty-two?
Thirty-five twenty-two, public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana. Vacating the following described property, north-south alley between Victoria Street and east-west alley.
All right. Is there a committee report?
Yes, this was heard today in, gosh, where the heck was I?
Vacation.
Public Works and Property Vacation, and it was given a favorable recommendation. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Angela, we don't have to ask you.
It's all a blur. I don't know how many times I have to say it, but I'll say it one more time. Angela Smith, zoning administrator with offices on the fourteenth floor of this building. So, the petition in front of you this evening is to vacate kind of this L-shaped alley that comes south off the east-west alley and connects into Victoria Street. This is part of a larger development that the council saw recently to rezone for a gas station and convenience store. As such, they would be using the current north, or east-west alley to access the property. The building straddles this, this existing alley, and it was there, the floor needs to be vacated. And once the development's completed, there will also be improvements to Victoria Street. The Board of Public Works, I believe, sent this with a favorable recommendation, and petitioner is here.
All right. Let's hear from the petitioner.
Hi there. Steve Ruby at Marsh Consulting, three fifteen West Jefferson, South Bend, Indiana, representing the petitioner, Mandi Upseeing. This was part of a bigger project, as mentioned, from Angela, to allow for a C-store, a convenience store at this location. The petitioner at the time, the petition was filed, just to clarify, it was under previous ownership, two different pieces. That has now since been sold to the actual C-store owner now, so I want to clarify that. That was a question that come up earlier. But it now is owned, both sides of the alleyway, by the same owner who is looking to build this convenience store. And they are requesting that this alleyway between this area be vacated so that, allow for that use. And as Angela mentioned, improvements to Victoria and the site will be, be done as part of this project.
Council members, do you have any question for the petitioners? If not, we'll go to the public hearing portion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Clerk Jones, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill number thirty-five dash twenty-two?
There is no one from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill thirty-five twenty-two.
Is there anyone looking to speak in opposition?
There is no one wishing to speak in opposition of Bill thirty-five twenty-two.
Council members, would you like to make any statements? If none, if none, Clerk Jones, I will now entertain a motion.
Motion to send to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
All right. Bill number thirty-five dash twenty-two will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Clerk Jones, would you give Bill thirty-seven dash twenty-two a second reading?
Thirty-seven twenty-two, public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana. Appropriating additional funds of forty-six million eighty thousand four hundred and five dollars from the American Rescue Plan Fund Number Two-Sixty-Three.
Right. Is there a committee report?
Yes, Chair. Thirty-seven twenty-two was heard in Personal and Finance today, and it was given a favorable recommendation to the Committee of the Whole.
All right. The petitioner is present. I ask that you state your name and address and share with us key points regarding the bill that's before us.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Lee. I will briefly run through the same presentation that we went through in committee this afternoon, maybe not go into quite as much detail since everyone was there. Before I get started, just, it's not directly germane to this bill, but it's now been brought up twice. Just to correct the, the record, fifty-four million dollars was not the amount spent on Howard Park. Eighteen million dollars was the amount spent on Howard Park. That might have come from fifty-seven million dollars was the total amount of the MYSP Parks and Trails Initiative, which were parks all across the city.
I was just repeating what you said.
Directly related to the bill, but I just wanted to make sure that that was correct on the record. So, regarding the Bill thirty-seven twenty- So regarding the bill thirty-seven twenty-two, what this does is this appropriates the ARP funding or a portion of the ARP funding for an allowable use of the ARP funds, which is to replace lost public sector revenue. So this is directly from the Department of the Treasury's website on allowable use of ARP funds. And the first allowable use that they, that they list is to that, to replace lost revenue up to the amount of the revenue lost during the pandemic. So as we went through in committee this afternoon, the, what, the question of why we would want to use revenue replacement or this revenue loss replacement is really to increase flexibility. So part of our plan to utilize the American Rescue Plan funding is to use this revenue replacement, bring, satisfy the Treasury Department requirements immediately, bring the dollars from the ARP fund into the general fund and then have an increased amount of flexibility on what those dollars can be used for. Because we will be satisfying the Treasury Department requirements by utilizing this route of revenue replacement, we then have more flexibility on how those funds can be used, when those funds can be used, and more in line with local control and the administration and council's priorities that we've talked through. What this fund would do is appropriate funding to pay for expenditures that are normally paid for from the general fund. As Jeff Rao from Baker Tilly went through earlier in committee, there are certain things that this funding cannot be used to pay for, but things like police and fire expenditures that are normally paid for from the general fund, salaries for police and fire can be used to, the revenue replacement funds can be used to pay for those things directly out of the ARP fund, which then frees up the money in the general fund to, to use for what we call the ARP-related budget. What this bill does not do is it does not change that ARP-related budget. So it does not change the strategic priorities and the, and the programs that we talked about during the twenty-twenty-two budget process, nor does it remove council's role i- in appropriating those funds. So council is still required to approve the appropriations that are proposed by the, by the administration in order to allow the spending of any funding across the city, regardless of whether that funding is in the general fund or in the ARP fund. When I talk about the ARP-related budget and the fact that this bill does not change the ARP-related budget, this is what I am referring to. This, this slide was shown many times during the twenty-twenty-two budget discussions. And just to clarify, and this might have been what you were talking about earlier, council member White during committee meeting. The only change on this slide to what was shown during the twenty-twenty-two budget process is under Safe Community for Everyone, the last, the last item on there is ARP Premium Pay. That was not discussed during the twenty-twenty-two budget process because that was actually appropriated in twenty-twenty-two in January or February of this year. So that's two million dollars that was not discussed during the budget process, but was appropriated subsequent to the budget approval by council. So this is the ARP-related budget. And as I said, these, the spending on these programs is not changed by this bill thirty-seven twenty-two. Our total award from the ARP was fifty-eight point nine million dollars. And as you can see down there in the lower right corner, the total appropriated budget for these dollars is just over fifty-eight million dollars. So it, it, because I say that this bill does not change that planned spending, the question is, what does it do? The, the answer is, is that, as I said earlier, it frees up the money in the general fund to pay for those programs. So we have multiple funds in the city, two of those funds are the general fund and the ARP fund. We received fifty-eight point nine million dollars from the federal government into the ARP fund, but when we budgeted the spending on those programs that I just had up on the screen, we planned to spend from both the general fund and the ARP fund. And as you can see on the screen, most of the, the planned spending was actually coming, planned to come from the general fund, forty-five million dollars of the plan, fifty-eight million dollars of the budgeted, fifty-eight million dollars. The reason why we planned it that way is because we expressly anticipated using this revenue replacement fund or revenue replacement use to free up funds in the general fund in order to, in order to pay for those strategic priorities. So that's what this bill thirty-seven twenty-two actually does, is it moves expenses from the general fund to the ARP fund, frees up forty-six million dollars in the general fund, which we can then use on the strategic priorities in the ARP-related budget. Again, as we talked about in committee, we are moving on these priorities. So not only does this, this bill not change this plan, we are actually already in the process of implementing many of these priorities. And so you can see up on the screen, again, the first column being the total budget for each one of these programs, but then a number of different columns that show where we are in the process of implementing these things. So a column for money that has been spent, meaning the money's actually gone out the door to its intended recipient, or encumbered, meaning we have a contract in place that the money will be spent in, in short order. And then another column for committed capital projects where we may not have a full contract in place yet, but we are in specific conversations around what this money will be used for, and we've committed to use these things for capital projects, which in general, regardless of the funding source, just take a long time to put together and have a long lead time. And so we want to make sure we commit those, those funds for those capital projects upfront. If you add those two columns together of spent and encumbered and then capital projects that may not be encumbered yet but are committed, we have thirty-seven point six million dollars of our total award of fifty-eight point nine million dollars is either spent or committed as of last week when I put this together. The last thing on here is, is how did I get to the forty-six million dollars that's in the bill? I went through it in a lot of detail in committee. And so happy to do that again. It is here as an appendix as well, if you want to walk through step by step. But the answer is that there's a four-step calculation that the federal government prescribes for us that we went through. Essentially, what you do is you compare your base year revenue, which is the first year or the last year prior to the pandemic, which for us was a calendar year twenty-nineteen, and you add five point two percent to that each year, which the federal government calls counterfactual revenue, which is essentially an estimate of what would your revenue have been had the pandemic not occurred. You then compare that counterfactual revenue to your actual revenue in each year and you calculate your total reduction in revenue. For the city, it was just over fifty-five million dollars is what we calculated for our first two calculation points. In terms of that, so that fifty-five million dollars is the total possible amount of revenue replacement that we could request or that we could utilize from our total award of fifty-eight point nine million dollars. In terms of why it's forty-six million dollars and not fifty-five million dollars, as I saw, as that graphic earlier showed, there are a number of programs that are intended to be spent directly from the ARP fund number two sixty-three. So those, those funds would be spent directly from the ARP fund and we would not utilize those funds on revenue replacement. And the forty-six point eight million dollars is instead the amount of money that we intend to spend from the general fund. So if you could take our total award plus some interest earnings and then subtract out the two programs that are intended to be spent directly from the ARP fund, which is the Dream Center and the ARP Premium Pay, that's how you get the forty-six point, close to forty-six point one million dollars. So with that, I am happy to take any questions from council. Jeff Rao from Baker Tilly is, was kind enough to stick around as well. If there's any questions for him, I'm sure he'd be happy to answer as well. Thank you.
All right, council members, are there any, any questions? I think we, we, we all asked all our questions. Okay, councilwoman Hammond?
Mr. Parker, you just went through, and correct me if I'm wrong, thirty-seven plus million have been designated and or spent.
Went too far. Yes, thirty-seven point six million have been spent or committed.
Committed.
Yes.
And we have a total of fifty-eight million. So can we assume that twenty million of this has not yet been designated, spent?
So the, the remainder up to the fifty-eight million, just over fifty-eight million dollars that's been budgeted, have, have been budgeted and so allocated to various things that, like home repair assistance, home buying assistance. We just haven't necessarily started the process of spending that money. We haven't encumbered that money or specifically said, this is exactly how we're going to spend it. We may be working towards that. And anything that's not in one of those columns, that doesn't mean we're not working on it. It just means that we haven't necessarily, like I said, this is exactly what this is going to be spent on and how it's going to be spent.
But it is earmarked.
It is earmarked for those programs.
So there's not this big pool of money still out there waiting, correct?
That's correct, yes. So it, it can be changed, obviously, but it is currently, this is the plan that we're working towards.
Okay, second question. Could you please remind me us what the public safety tech projects is, what's included in that?
Sure, yeah. So I think that that is a sort of consistently evolving question. What we had talked about during the twenty-twenty-two budget process was things like incentivizing the use of security cameras for businesses and residences to help increase the sense of security for people. One of the things that we're looking at now is expanding our crime center and so having better access to data about crime and, and maybe even looking at a real-time crime center type of situation. So those are some of the things that we're looking at right now. But as you can see, only a small portion of that, those dollars have actually been committed at this point. So there's a lot of conversations looking towards that, but, but still more to come on that.
So the one point five is not, that's not the complete amount?
The one point five is the budget for it. And so so far of that budget, we have spent or encumbered two thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Oh, I see, I see, forgive me, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else?
As far as the question goes, so this, this really just satisfies the treasury requirement, right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and so none of these funds can be moved without council approval?
That's right.
And we have already approved all of these funds?
Yes.
Prior. I just want to make that clear to the public because I think there is some misunderstanding.
That's correct. So this, what is, what is up on the screen now is what has been approved by council. In order to change from this, that would take another action by council in order to approve that.
Thank you, Chair.
No problem. Yes.
Mr. Parker, is it possible to make this PowerPoint available to the public?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Sure.
Yes.
May I? What do you think about community benefit agreements?
I'm not familiar with what that is, so I can't comment.
Okay, so like, we have all these projects and it appears that you, the administration has an idea of what he wants to do with these projects. A community benefit agreement will require the city to have percentages that are in line with usually the population of people or an, an agreed upon amount so that people that live in those areas can actually collect some of the dollars that's being spent in that area. So for instance, if there's a construction project that's taking place in the middle of this room, we will require the city to employ fifteen percent of the people that are in the room.
Okay.
So what I was asking you, you said you didn't know, so I'll explain to you. Where I'm going with this is that when you guys come back, because you will be coming back a lot, actually, we need to be able to produce results for people that live in this local area. We can't just keep spending money, spending money, spending money and we're not collecting the money back. And so I'm asking you for your sensitivity to that. I don't know if that's an offline discussion between you and I or is that a discussion when the bill is filed for paying some sort of cost to some type of idea? But I, me paying attention to these projects and everything else that has been going on, it doesn't serve the, the greater interest of the people that were impacted by COVID. And I've said it earlier. So I'm still tapping at this door, trying to get in. So some of those dollars have to go to the impoverished community, the people that were impacted by COVID by, you know, at a higher level than most communities. It has to go to some black people. It has to happen. And the reason why it has to happen is because, the reason why this money is here is because of those people were impacted by COVID at a high level. So when we're talking about the Dream Center, there needs to be a community benefit agreement on there. I don't know who gets the projects, but we have to make sure people that when that ten million or twenty million, whatever the number is, gets spent, members of the public that live in that area, they can get a job.
So I, I don't know if there was a question, but I can definitely follow up with the engineering department and as well as VPA.
No, I should be a little bit more sensitive to that. So as the conversation continues to roll over, like if a bill comes down to next council, well, because we don't have no first readings, but next month. Right, so we need to have that conversation before the bill is filed so we can start working at this together. Rather than we, it's a knee-jerk reaction and then somebody say, well, did you talk to the department here? And then we get nowhere with it, right? I want to have that conversation when you're getting ready to file the bill.
Okay, thank you.
Could I ask one more question, Chair?
Oh, real quickly.
Very quickly, I promise. There was a public comment regarding quarterly reports. Is that something that we can have the administration commit to so that we're aware of what's happening with the ARP money and the plan?
Yes, so we are always happy to come back in and speak with council quarterly. However often, council would like to invite us back to, to discuss this, whether it's in committee, to the full council, really however often. This, I will just share that this report that you're seeing on the screen, we are very sensitive to the need to very closely track this spending. And this is a report that I can generate at the touch of a button. So if you, or any other citizen wants, you know, three o'clock on a Friday afternoon wants to know how much money we've spent to date on the ARP funds, that, that is a, a report that we built into our financial system. And so very happy to come back as often and talk about what's going on as, as often as council would like to.
I believe you, you responded to me at nine-thirty yet last night, so you seem to always be on, so thank you.
All right. At this time, we're going to go to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of bill thirty-seven dash twenty-two?
There is no one from the public expressing interest to speak in favor of bill thirty-seven twenty-two.
All right, is there someone in the, someone in the, all right. You're, you're here to speak in favor?
Against.
Okay, we haven't got.
Yeah, she's going to ask it next.
All right. All right. Clerk Jones, is there anyone here to speak in opposition?
We have one person here that's wishing to speak in opposition.
Good evening, my name is Dr. Barbara Williams and I've been a resident of South Bend, mainly living in the north, near, in the northwest triangle area. Okay? My medical specialty is internal medicine and I've practiced in South Bend since nineteen eighty-nine. Prior to going to medical school, I worked in health planning of facilities in northern one-third of Indiana. We studied health status and planned for and approved all capital, new capital expenditures for healthcare facilities in that area. The pandemic has unmasked multiple inequities in health status and access to medical services in our population. These inequities must be addressed in a public forum and a public sector. What we have learned since nineteen eighty... I think she lost her mic. I lost the microphone. Now it's back. What we have learned since nineteen eighty, when I left health planning to be, go to medical school, are the following. Health is not simply a result of medical facilities or access to medical care. Affordable housing, food deserts, and jobs and recreational facilities located near that affordable housing has a lot to do with health status. I urge you to appropriate additional dollars of the American Rescue Plan for federally funds to be spent addressing affordable housing in our beloved city, enticing grocery stores and produce markets to locate near that affordable housing, and encouraging jobs and recreational facilities to be near that affordable housing. I think this has been addressed to not to my satisfaction or that of many of us in the medical community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else that likes to speak in opposition?
There's no one else virtually that is expressing the interest to speak in opposition of bill thirty-seven twenty-two.
Council members, would you like to make any statements regarding bill thirty-seven? Council members, would you like to make any statements regarding Bill 37-22? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Just to respond to the comment, I would have to say for my purposes that the quarterly report and making sure that those dollars are being spent in the areas that we are prioritizing is a way of us trying to keep an eye on how that is spent and where it is spent. So thank you.
All right. Anyone else? I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill 37-22.
Move to send to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I'll second.
All right, Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Nay.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right. Bill 37-22 will be sent to the council with a favorable recommendation. I will now entertain a motion to rise from the committee of the whole and report back to the full council.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, please call the roll.
You can call by acclamation.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Those that oppose? Motion carries.
Okay, the regular meeting is reconvened. The full council is back in session. This is the portion of our meeting where bills are given a third reading and action is taken regarding bills that were heard during the committee of the whole. So Clerk Jones, could you please give Bill, oh, I'm sorry. So I had to revise this. So 1622, that one was tabled, so we won't be hearing that bill this evening. 1722 was tabled, we will not be hearing that bill this evening. So that brings us to Bill 2322. So Clerk Jones, could you please give a third reading to Bill 23-22? 2322, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana approving a petition of the advisory board of zoning appeals for the property located at 223 North Lafayette Boulevard, Councilman district number one in the city of South Bend, Indiana. Thank you. Councilwoman Lee, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding the bill?
This bill comes from the committee of the whole with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. I would now like to entertain a motion regarding Bill 23-22. Move for the passage of Bill 17-22. Twenty, sorry, 2322.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and it's been duly seconded. Clerk Jones, could you call the roll? Yes. Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Eight ayes. Thank you. Bill 23-22 has passed. Clerk Jones, could you please give Bill 24-22 a third reading? 2422, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana approving a petition of the advisory board of zoning appeals for the property located at 1430 Mr. Walker Avenue, Councilman district number three in the city of South Bend, Indiana. Thank you. Councilwoman Lee, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole?
Yes. Bill 24-22 comes from the committee of the whole with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you so much. I would like to now entertain a motion regarding Bill 24-22.
I'd like to move for passage.
Second.
It's been moved and duly seconded. Clerk Jones, could you call the roll? Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Eight ayes. Thank you. We are now going to move to, I believe, Bill 3122. Clerk Jones, could you please give Bill 3122 a third reading? 3122, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana approving a petition of the advisory board of zoning appeals for the property located at 914 Sherman Avenue, Councilman district number one in the city of South Bend, Indiana. Thank you. Councilwoman Lee, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding Bill 3122?
Yes, 3122 was heard in the committee of the whole, and it comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. I would like to now entertain a motion regarding Bill 31-22.
I move for passage.
Second.
3122 has been duly moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll? Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Eight ayes. Thank you. Bill 3222 was tabled until September 12th. I believe that brings us to Bill number 33-22. So Clerk Jones, could you please give 33-22 a third reading? 3322, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana approving a petition of the advisory board of zoning appeals for the property located at 1908 East Calvert Street, Councilman district number three in the city of South Bend, Indiana. Thank you. Councilwoman Lee, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding Bill 33-22?
Yes, 33-22 was heard in the committee of the whole, and it comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you so much. I would like to now entertain a motion regarding the bill.
Move for passage.
Second.
The bill has been duly moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, could you call the roll? Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Eight ayes. Thank you. Bill 33-22 has passed. Moving on, Clerk Jones, could you please give Bill 35-22 a third reading? 3522, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana vacating the following described property, North Side Alley between Victoria Street and East West Alley. Thank you. Councilwoman Lee, is there a recommendation for the committee of the whole regarding Bill 3522?
Yes. Bill 35-22 was heard in the committee of the whole, and it comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. I would now entertain a motion regarding Bill 3522. Move for passage of Bill 35-22.
Sorry, second.
Okay, there's been a motion, it's been duly seconded, to move Bill 35-22. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll? Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Eight ayes. Thank you. Bill 3522 has passed. Clerk Jones, could you please give Bill 37-22 a third reading? 3722, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana appropriating additional funds of $46,080,405 from the American Rescue Plan. Thank you. Councilwoman Lee, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding Bill 37-22?
Yes, Bill 37-22 was heard in the committee of the whole, and it comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. I would now like to entertain a motion regarding Bill 3722.
I'd like to move Bill 3722 for passage.
Second.
It's been, a motion made for passage and duly seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll? Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Nay.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Seven ayes. Thank you, Clerk Jones. Bill 37-22 has passed. We're going to move on to, is that every, did I?
That's it.
Okay, I always want to make sure. Okay, we're going to move on to resolutions. This is the portion of the council meeting where the common council hears bills filed as proposed resolutions. The title of each proposed resolution is read by the city clerk. A report from the committee chairperson of the standing committee to which the bill was referred to for an advisory review and recommendation is then given. This also requires a public hearing. I'm going to go ahead and read the public portion part. So during the public portion on each proposed resolution, members of the public are invited to address the council. We ask that you give your name and address and comments on the bill. If you have any questions, they will be addressed by the presenter during their rebuttal. Each member of the public is limited to five minutes, with those speaking in favor going first, followed by opposition, and then a five-minute rebuttal for the presenter of the bill. So going through our resolutions, Bill 2232 was tabled. Bill 2236 was tabled. So that brings us to Bill 20, to Resolution 22-37. Make sure that I didn't miss anything there, okay? So Clerk Jones, could you please give Resolution 22 or Bill number 2237 a reading? Yes. 2237, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana for a waiver of noncompliance regarding the vacant building abatement for 3602 Sample LLC. Thank you, Councilwoman Tomas Morgan. Is there a committee report?
Yes. Bill 2237 came to Community Investment Committee this afternoon and comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Okay, thank you. And if for the petitioner, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening again, council members. Caleb Bauer, acting executive director of the Department of Community Investment with offices on the 14th floor of this building. The first bill before you is a waiver of noncompliance for Seaflow and their facility on Sample Street. We're requesting the waiver for 2020, 2021, and 2022 for two years of failure to submit forms 322 to the St. Joseph Auditor, St. Joseph County Auditor's office, and then a late submission this year. The correct forms have now been filed, and property taxes are up to date for the property. The company has exceeded their original investment goal and significantly surpassed their original job creation commitment as a part of the abatement. And Zach Rossi from Seaflow is also here representing the petitioner.
Hi, I'm Zach Rossi. I work with Seaflow. Our office is located at 3602 West Sample Street. I'd like to thank you all for your attention today. I guess I can just go into a little bit. We moved here from Chicago two years ago, and back then, we promised that we were going to bring six people and 12 people eventually, and luckily, we've had some really good growth here. The city has been great to us, and everything's worked out well, so we've added, you know, almost 50 more jobs than we anticipated. But it seems that we forgot to send our, one of the forms to the county auditor, so I'd ask for your apologies for that.
Okay, is there anything else you would like to say? Is that pretty much it? Okay.
I can answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Bauer. At this time then, we'll come to the council. Is there any questions from the council? Councilman Warner?
So what do you guys do exactly?
We do marine and RV parts.
Out on Sample Street?
Correct.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other council members have any questions? I see, I'm going to start this side here. Council, you know, I'm fine. You're fine? Councilman Lee?
What would you say has created this, this, this surge? Or you thought you were only going to add six people, and you end up adding 56 people? What has been the thing that has brought you the increase?
So I definitely, I think it's probably twofold. One is proximity to our customers. We used to be in Chicago. Like I said, half of our big consumer base would be the RV field, so we're a lot closer, so it's easier for us in that way. Secondly, we had a plan of phasing in, doing production here eventually, but we actually started a lot earlier than we thought, so we're actually producing product in South Bend under the name South Bend Components, so we've had a lot of people through there.
And if I'm, I don't have my glasses tonight, so it says, a company has completed $500,000 investment in property after a $350 million commitment and original resolution?
I apologize for that. That should just read $350,000.
All right. I didn't know, I thought, that's tremendous growth.
Maybe one day.
All right.
Okay, any other council members on this side? No? Councilman Wax, did you have a?
No.
Councilwoman Hammond?
Thank you. Can you tell us how many of the 50 new jobs created are actually South Bend residents?
I think, I can't tell you exactly, but I can speak as an estimate. I think most of them. I did the calculation one time, and over 80% of them are in the economic opportunity zone, just surroundings, so not only in South Bend, but in the very close surrounding area.
Okay, that's good news. Secondly, did you receive notices from the county auditor's office in 2020 or 2019, 2020 for missing filings?
I'm, I'm sorry, I wasn't dealing with a specific part of it. Like I said, my colleague who was, has actually had a christening right now, so, but I talked a little bit with him before, and it seems that the address that we had in Chicago may have been the address on file, so I don't recall receiving any of them, but it's very possible that they went to that address. Sorry.
That's a significant problem if addresses are not changed. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Davis, do you have a question? And I just want to clarify, you said it went from six committed jobs to 50? Was that correct, or 50?
We were targeting 12 full-time employees by this time, but we're at 56 now.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, if there's no other questions from council members, I would like to proceed to the public portion. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of Bill 22-37? There is no one from the virtual public that is expressing interest to speak in favor of Bill 2237. And I don't see anyone in the chamber as well. Is there anyone speak, wishing to speak against Bill 22-37? There is no one wishing to speak against Bill 2237. I don't see anyone in the chamber as well, so at this time, we're going to close the public portion of the public hearing. I'd like to come back to council members. Are there any comments? Councilwoman Tomas Morgan?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to thank you for your investment and commitment to South Bend. Congratulations on, on the additional full-time jobs and the success of your, of your company. Great to have you here.
Councilman Wax?
Thank you. I just want to echo that comment, and then just, it's always, the goal for tax abatements is for it to be a win-win for, you know, for, a win for the city and the residents nearby and the city as a whole for its tax base, and then a win for the businesses that they could leverage that abatement to succeed. And while I'm not excusing the, the not filing the proper forms, and I'm sure that mistake won't happen again, it is always positive to hear the successes of an abatement. So I just want to thank you for your investment, and thank you for choosing South Bend, and wish you a lot of success going forward, and hopefully, we won't have to hear from you again. Thank you very much, sir. Except for good news, which you're always welcome to come back for.
Right, man.
Okay, and as the sixth district representative, which Sample Street is in my district, I would like to say thank you for exceeding the expectations.[1772.88] thank you for exceeding the expectations. Thank you for making that investment and I hope that it will, will maybe pull some more businesses to that area because it is a great location. It's right, uh, right there off the bypass. Um, we have some of the most, um, high-energy electrical lines to support many other different types of industry because that is like at the crossroads of America. So I just want to take the time to say thank you. Um, and at this time, um, I believe everyone had something to say. So if, is there a motion regarding this bill that's before us, thirty-seven dash, or twenty-two dash thirty-seven?
I move, uh, I move Bill twenty-two dash thirty-seven for passage. For, excuse me, for adoption.
Second.
Okay, thank you. There has been a motion and it has been duly seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Uh, thank you. Bill twenty-two dash thirty-seven has been adopted, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to Resolution number, Bill twenty-two dash thirty-eight. Clerk Jones, could you please read the title of the resolution?
Yes. Twenty-two thirty-eight, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, designating a tax abatement for certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as five oh five South Michigan Street, South Bend, Indiana, four six six zero one, as an economic revitalization area for purposes of an eight-year mixed-use real property tax abatement for the Monroe LLC.
Uh, thank you, Clerk Jones. Uh, Councilwoman Tomas Morgan, is there a committee report?
Yes, Chair, the, um, Bill twenty-two thirty-eight came to community investment this afternoon and comes to the common council with a favorable recommendation.
Okay, thank you. And I see we do have a friendly face here that we've seen most of the evening.
Thank you, councilmembers. Uh, Caleb Bauer, uh, acting executive director of community investment with offices on the fourteenth floor of this building. Before you is the, uh, correct designating resolution, uh, for the five oh five South Michigan Street, uh, development called the Monroe. This would be an eight-year mixed-use real property abatement, uh, with a commitment of thirteen point nine million dollars in investment. Uh, and the proposed project is a four-story, sixty-five thousand square foot mixed-use and multifamily building. Uh, it would create eight new FTEs, um, and would include a substantial portion of the building for, uh, affordable housing. This is a property that is, uh, one of the projects that wa- went before IHCPDA and was submitted for nine percent tax credits and we're optimistic, uh, about its chances downstate. And, uh, we think it would be a transformative project for, uh, this block. This is the, these are the parcels that are, contain the former Fat Daddy's, uh, buildings and, uh, currently vacant parcels on the corner of Monroe and Michigan. And so, uh, this would be a substantial improvement and an exciting project and we're grateful, uh, uh, for the developer's interest in this. Happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, is there any questions from council? Councilman Davis?
It has nothing to do with the tax abatement, but everything to do with the building. Gear started grinding when you said four stories, sixty residents. Four stories, like seventy residents over here at the Heritage, um, Place, one elevator. Do you know how many elevators are going to go into this unit?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. I, I know there is an elevator shaft for this building, so, um, typically in a new construction, that could sometimes include two elevators, but I would have to get back to you on the specific project.
That, because of zoning, they're allowed just at one or, you know, they will only push for one. But needs like two. And that's what they're having a problem with over there at Heritage Place. Everybody's using it. So obviously it was shut down. Obviously it will break, right? Because the usage is so high. So, eh, yeah, find out from the place.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other council members that have a question? I think it's been presented us to us at least four times now, I'm pretty sure. Okay, so at this point then I'm going to move to the public portion. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of Bill twenty-two dash thirty-eight?
There's no one, um, from the public expressing interest to speak in favor of Bill twenty-two thirty-eight.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak against Bill twenty-two dash thirty-eight?
There's no one from the public expressing interest to speak in opposition of Bill twenty-two thirty-eight.
Okay, thank you, Clerk Jones. At this time, we're going to come back to the council. Is there any comments? From councilmembers? Seeing none, is there a motion regarding the bill?
Move for adoption.
Second.
There has been a motion to move for adoption. It's been duly seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Bill twenty-two dash thirty-eight has been adopted. We have no bills on first reading. We have no unfinished business. Is there any new business? Councilman Lee?
I would just like to invite my council colleagues to, uh, Goodwill on the Go at Kirby, Corby Homes on this coming Friday from, mm, twelve into three. That's where we bring social services and the residents together so that they can have, they can find services in their own backyard. So if you're available, we would love to have you, love to see your face over at the Corby Homes, twelve to three on this Friday.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other announcements? Councilwoman Hammond?
Yes, I would just like to mention, um, schools back in session either this week or next. We have had a pretty, um, significant rash of pretty erratic driving in South Bend that has been brought to the council more than once. So just to bring awareness to the community that kiddos are going to be waiting for buses and walking to school and if we could all be very vigilant in making sure that these kids are safe. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the announcement that I would like to make, seeing no others that right now, is, um, Prairie Apartments, they are having a back-to-school days. Uh, that's going to be on August the eleventh. Um, if you know anybody that would like to donate any school supplies, please get in touch with me and I would be happy to pick them up. I believe it's going to be five to six o'clock. And I, right now, I know they were past fifty, fifty children in need of items. With no other business then, we'll move to the privilege of the floor. And I would like to read a statement before going to the privilege of the floor. Um, disrespectful, rude, or disruptive speech or actions will not be tolerated. Such speech or actions, such as verbal attacks on any person, may result in an individual without notice forfeiting the remainder of her, his or her allotted time. If you could, in individuals, please state your name and residential address. And you are limited to three minutes. It's the maximum time allotted for this portion of the meeting shall be thirty minutes. Individuals will not be permitted to address topics which the council has already heard previously on the agenda. The council president may assign a topic raised by any individual during the privilege of the floor to the appropriate council member and/or request the city clerk to contact a member of the city administration for a review, and topics can be assigned and shall be responded to at the next scheduled council meeting.
Sharon Benicki, thirty-eight twenty-two Ford Street. Um, I'm finally getting back with some paperwork. It's, um, where we'd like the street light put on Chicago. I've marked where the existing lights are. Karen and I have talked briefly about it and I think Kenneth and I, there's just one section that is really dark and this is where all the drug deals are also going on. So if we could, where the purple is, and I've marked on here where the, what home addresses are, those that I could figure out that are owner-occupied. Surprisingly, we only have four vacant lots in this section and all of them are actually owned by the houses next to them, which really impressed me. Um, it is a good area if we can just keep out those that we don't want. So I'll leave that here for you. Um, Henry, I, somewhere on Facebook, I saw that you were having problems in your area with overgrown lots. Have you tried talking to the people about natural habitats and explaining what they are and what they aren't? A couple of the council members recently saw my front yard. I will admit, at times, mine looks really raggedy-taggedy and people scratch their head and wonder what, but it is a natural habitat. It's never the same two days in a row. I can, I had a gentleman just stop yesterday and tell me how he loves my botanical garden. And I said, "Well, botanical, okay." I just call it a natural habitat. But in my yard, and it's a smaller front yard, um, at any given time, I will have cone flowers, milkweed, roses, queen anselies, hostas, daylilies, irises, tiger lilies, tulips, daffodils, crocuses, sunflowers, daisies, hibiscus, ferns, peonies, growing. Um, the birds that I attract are cardinals, bluebirds, robins, doves, finches, wrens, blackbirds, and hummingbirds. I also have monarch butterflies and bees and all different kinds of other, what, I have a bunny family that lives in there. It's not to everybody's liking, but it does have a reason and a purpose. So, you know, instead of just trying to make everybody have the flat green grass that uses chemicals and water, I don't water my yard. I don't maintain it. I don't do anything to it. During the middle of the summer, when everybody else was watering their yard twice a day, trying to keep it green and fresh, mine was the greenest, cu- most colorful yard in the block and I did nothing. It's just something to think about before.
We have a city code and it says that so many inches above can be cited by code enforcement. I'm just, I'm, I'm just sticking to the rules. That's all I'm doing.
It also allows for natural habitats. I'm, I'm just throwing it out there as a suggestion, something to think about.
You win. It's okay.
I, I'm just, drive by my house sometime and look at it. I know Sheila saw it, Kenneth saw it. I don't know if Karen's been by, but it's an interesting, I admit it's interesting. It takes a special person to appreciate it, but it took my son several years to decide to enjoy it, but, but here's that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for the language.
Thank you for your comments.
I have a natural habitat at my house, too. I'm telling my wife that tonight.
Okay, um, Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting to talk on the privilege of the floor, virtually?
There is no one in the virtual audience that is waiting to talk on privilege of the floor.
Okay, then at this time, um, we will adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you.